Joining us at is seven o'clock, so please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you all for joining us this evening. As many of you are aware, this weekend our community lost two wonderful people in a tragic accident. One, a teacher, brother, husband and father. The other was a classmate, friend, brother, teammate and playground buddy. We are all devastated and our prayers are with the family and friends. Please just remember to give all of your love to those around you and try to be more kind, my friends. Superintendent Jennings, I think you're going to introduce the first item on our agenda.
I'm going to, but before they come up, I just want to share, I know we have a lot of people in the audience tonight, which is a good thing. I'm glad that everybody is here. I just wanted to share with the public an update on the reconsideration process. As you, many of you know, we had two books that were requested for reconsideration. The committee did review the books, they did meet, and they made a decision public. They have thirty days in which to render that written, written decision for the materials, and they will do so to Mr. Walt Wilcox, who's the Associate Superintendent, this Friday. At that time, he'll reach out to the individual that has asked for the books to be considered, and he'll share the written report with them and sit down and meet with them, and then he'll also meet with the school and the library. And it really is following the process and the administrative regulation that's been set forth anytime a material is questioned within our library. So I just wanted to share that before we jumped into today's, today's meeting and make sure the public was informed on where we're at in the process.
Thank you Superintendent Jennings.
Next, I'd like to ask Principal Aaron Wilson and ask that Jack Dutcher, I hope I said that correctly, to come up to the microphone.
Thank you Chairman Catalier, Board of Trustees and Superintendent Jennings. I'm Aaron Wilson, the Principal at Natrona County High School. I have the pleasure of sitting next to Jackson Dutcher, who came to me in the summertime with a project that he developed in order to get his Eagle Scout badge. And one of the things that, in order to get that badge, they have to participate in some community service and a project. And so, he's going to present that project to you for consideration of a donation to our school, at Natrona County High School. Welcome, Jackson Dutcher.
Good evening. I'm Jackson Dutcher. I'm a senior at Natrona County High School. And through family friend, I recently, I learned in the last year of their family in the Casper community, that Mrs. Janet Keating and the late Mr. Pat Keating have possession of the historic cornerstone at NCHS from 1913. And the stone is clearly inscribed with the words Natrona County High School in 1913. Mrs. Keating is willing and happy to donate it to be placed back on the grounds of NCHS. This historic cornerstone comes from the first NCHS, NCHS structure built in 1913 at the current Elm Street School Site. And the original building was situated near the current interior courtyard, which was then practically surrounded by the current NCHS building after construction began on it in 1924. The 1913 building was then torn down with several stone blocks salvaged and reused around Casper and the community. It's not fully understood how the Keating family came into possession of the stone. All we know is that they have had the stone for a couple decades now. And I'm an active member of the Boy Scouts of America. I'm working towards my Eagle Scout rank. And one of the requirements is to plan, develop, and give leadership on a service project that will benefit my community. As a student of NCHS, I find it important to give back to my school and would like to have this Eagle Scout project incorporate another small piece of history into our already beautiful and historic school grounds. By arranging for the ownership transfer of this cornerstone, carefully and safe, safely move it to a publicly accessible location on NCHS where it can be proudly displayed. I believe display of this historical item is something that would enhance the learning environment of the school. And its historical significance could explain the history and contribute to preservation, historical preservation and provide education to the community and outside visitors. I believe it is important to bring this cornerstone back to NCH, NCHS and showcase it as a part of our campus because the school does not currently have ownership of the cornerstone and was not aware it still existed. I believe this project is needed to permanently and elegantly display the cornerstone at the school, place it near the current building, which is also on the National Register of Historic Places, but also place very near to where the original building stood. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dutcher. This is a pretty awesome project, and I hope you'll keep a surprise of the progress on it, and I'm looking forward to seeing the final, final product. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Dutcher? Alright, thank you very much for joining us tonight. And at this time, we will move into the public comment portion of our meeting. I see there are quite a few people joining us here tonight, and I'm sure it's all because you drew the correlation between the low test scores and the increased absenteeism our district has been experiencing lately. And I think you're all putting together the importance of being in class, so thank you for joining us, and we're excited to hear your comments. I will say that I, we do ask that you're respectful of each other, respectful of the, each speaker, and just know that the audience outbursts make it very difficult to hold an effective meeting. And I know that everyone here is passionate about their topics, but this is not a popularity contest, so please hold your applause. We do limit public comment to one comment per commenter, and the time limit on that is three minutes. So please respect the limit. If you have additional information for the board, please email us or give us a call. Just so everyone's aware, we have a timer here, and at the end of three minutes, you will be notified that your time is up. So we ask that at that time, you relinquish the mic. We do ask that you refrain from vulgar and foul language. And as a request, we ask that if a previous speaker has already discussed your speaking points, please consider allowing other speakers to come forward. That's just a request, it is not a requirement. So, at this time, we'll open the floor to public comment. Anyone wishing to address the board, please come forward and state your name and address, and limit your comments to three minutes or less.
Good evening. My name is Pam Brondas. I'm a resident of Casper, Wyoming, and I've got three kids that have attended public schools in Natrona County from kindergarten through high school, and I currently have a junior at Kelly Walsh High School. I'm here tonight to voice my support for the recent decision made by the reconsideration committee that reviewed two books currently in Kelly Walsh and NCHS's libraries, as well as to offer some additional reasons to keep those books in place. Under the guiding principles of objection to learning resources of this district is the following statement, quote, "A parent has the right to determine reading, viewing, or listening matter for his or her own child. However, no parent has the right to determine reading, viewing, or listening matter for students other than his or her own child. When you remove books from public school libraries at the behest of one parent or a group, you are allowing that parent or group to determine what every other student may read, view, or listen to in schools, which directly impacts other parents' rights. This board and school librarians have publicly advised parents how to place restrictions on what books and contents their children may check out in school libraries. To those parents who say it's naive to think the restrictions would prevent their child from accessing books, I say that's a matter between that parent and that child, and not one that should impact any other student. Now, despite having practiced law in this state for over twenty years, I'm not going to quote the Wyoming statutes, cases, and provisions of the Wyoming and United States Constitution that contradict the assertions and claims that the contents in the books at issue are illegal, obscene, or child pornography. This board has excellent counsel who is more than capable of advising you on the legal standards." What I will quote is a statement from a transgender student who recently graduated from Kelly Walsh High School and who spoke in front of this board in January in response to the condemnation of the book Gender Queer. That student stated, quote, "If we ban this book, we are showing every transgender and non-binary student that they do not belong in this district. We tell them that their stories must be removed in order to protect other students from the knowledge of their very existence. The truth is, when we remove novels that reflect students' experiences from circulation, we send a very clear message that those students' stories, experiences, thoughts, and dreams also do not belong in our education system," end quote. Not a single kid that walks through our public school door, school doors is the same, but every one of them should feel safe and that they belong. Being able to see their experiences reflected in books in our high school libraries gives them a glimpse of understanding of who they are and that they belong. And isn't that what we want for every kid in this district? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brondas. Please hold your applause.
There's a time and a place to have an intellectual discussion like the one most people here tonight want to have. But due to the tragic loss that NC and Park Elementary Schools have suffered this past weekend, and out of respect to the family, I think it would be better to move the discussion to the next board meeting. This will allow NC and Park Elementary and the whole school community time to grieve.
Thank you, Ms. Schmidt. Excuse me, will you just press the button until the light turns green on the bottom there?
Got it.
Perfect, thank you.
Good evening. I'm Dr. Brent Pickett. I'm a professor at the University of Wyoming and serve as a dean. I'm not speaking for UW, but since the subject of the possible book ban falls within an area where I have done extensive research, I am speaking in a professional capacity. I'm the author of The Historical Dictionary of Homosexuality, now available in this handsome second edition, and also the author of this Stanford Encyclopedia Philosophy Entry on Homosexuality, which if you Google homosexuality typically comes up in the top five responses. I'm now at work on Historical Dictionary of Transgenderism. As a researcher, I can tell you minority gender identities, gender expressions, and non-heterosexual sexual orientations are exceedingly common, as a review of history and societies around the globe shows. Native American and First People tribes had, and often still have, Two-Spirit persons. In India, there are the Hijra, which is a very common minority gender expression. Hawaiian culture has the Mahu. Samoa and Tonga Island recognize that their gender, such as Tonga's Fakka lady. Thailand has the Kathuie or Sago, which is known as the second type of woman, or someone who was, in their way of phrasing it, born male but with a female heart. Different gender identities are a part, a natural and beautiful part of human variety. I have read trans bodies, trans selves as part of my research. It is a serious, thoughtful, and reliable discussion of the myriad of issues trans persons face. The language in it is generally clinical, even dry. It is a great reference for teens and their parents or guardians. Please do not target these books. While those voting in favor of a ban may tell themselves that they are protecting kids, the truth is that access to reliable information helps protect them. And the message they would receive from banning these would be one of hate. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pickett.
My name is Alexis Worthing. I am a senior at Natrona County High School. Again, as expressed earlier, it was a very tragic morning for NC. I sat with my classmates. I am frequently in classes with Jack Diaz. And we mourned together, we cried together. But that doesn't necessarily negate the idea that we must come together and express our voices and come together in support of democracy, which is why I'm here to speak with you tonight. As a senior at Natrona County High School, I've seen a lot of events occur like this. I've been forced to stay home from school for two days because I was receiving death threats from coming to school because of my identity. And I am not alone in this. There are so many children out there who don't see themselves represented in media. I'm proud to say that I grew up in libraries, and my mother was a proud supporter of my literacy. It meant that I could choose whatever I wanted to read, whatever I chose to see fit to read. By restricting what I could read, she was taking away my freedoms and my opportunity to grow. These types of literature is exactly representative of what children should be able to experience. Now, this might not come to pass, these books might not be banned, but in the rare sense that they might be removed, that could potentially open ourselves up to removing even more books, books that are even even more so critical to our education. Books such as Persepolis, which I read in my IB Literature class, where we discussed post-Iranian Revolution. Books like The Kite Runner, The Blue-Eyed Eyes, The Rape of Nanking. All of these books can lead to more and more, and that piles on top of a snowball that eventually leads us down a dark, dark path. I urge you, as one of the few students who's here tonight, who are actually experiencing real events at Natrona County High School, to truly think about what consequences we are encouraging for our children. Literacy and growth is important, and we should be exposing ourselves to a wide range of ideas. Ideas that parents might not necessarily agree with. But that's okay. That expands our critical thinking skills in order, encourage us to grow. It doesn't take away any rights or freedoms or any choices that parents may see fit. In fact, they are restricting themselves from liberty if they refuse to let their children grow and expand their minds. I urge you to remain in support of our basic First Amendment freedoms. I urge you to consider what repercussions we might actually have on these children, and think of the little children like me, once upon a time, whose only lifeline were these types of books. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Worthing. Press it one more time until it turns green. There you go.
Hi, my name's Christina Pham. I'm a psychology instructor at Casper College, and I also have a transgender child. But my research work is on education and improving educational environments for LGBTQ+ populations. And one of the things that we know is that they experience something called minority stress that can lead to poor education outcomes in the classroom. So they tend to graduate at lower rates, they tend to matriculate to colleges at lower rates because of the stress and pressure they feel in the classroom due to identity. When we talk about mental health issues, then those students tend to experience more anxiety, more depression, more suicidality than other students. But the thing that we know that decreases those rates and that increases educational outcomes in the classroom is representation. When they know they're being represented, when they feel like people acknowledge who they are as people, then their mental health increases and they do better in their schooling. So, I know I'm in the college, but in my classroom, I make it clear that I'm there and I'm accepting of everyone, and that we will all extend that grace to every person. And the thing I get back from students again and again is, even, they will just say to me, "I'm not part of the LGBTQ population, but I appreciate that you expect, that you respect all of us, and that makes me know that you also will respect me regardless of whatever it is that I present as, or whatever issues I have." So, I'm here because it's important to keep these books in the library so that these children know they're represented. If the goal is to provide them with the best education, then letting them know there's representation and support for them is the thing that will ensure that they are getting the education they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pham.
Hello, my name is Kyle True. I graduated from NC, as did my wife, my parents, my grandparents, and my great-grandmother, who I think was there when that stone was there. So I really appreciate that coming back, that's a good thing. I care a lot about the school district, thank you for having open meetings. I want to make two comments. First of all, I think that overriding concept of dealing with all people with dignity is is really important. And when we make light of something that's serious, then we're not doing a service to our population. When we take something as serious as gender dysphoria, which has the suicidality as was just mentioned, I don't deny any of those things were just mentioned, this is so serious, this should not be treated lightly as if we're just going to throw it out in our schools and say, "Here, a teacher or two can give you enough counseling on this." These are really serious issues and should be dealt with in a serious way. And I just don't think our school system is structured for that. We're structured for academics. My second point is that I think, I think we're moving into social activism in our school system by encouraging these things without the thorough and complete and full cycle discussion of consequences, ability to bear children. You know, psychologically, what does that do to a person? There are, there are huge issues that come up that I don't think the Natrona County School District was designed or intended to deal with. So I would ask that we stay with academics and not allow our school district to move into social activism. You know, ten years ago, this was not considered serious anywhere on the planet. So I would suggest that in a relative timeframe, this is a very new concept, and for us to rush to adopt something and to think that we can find a place for it in a system that was clearly intended for academics, not social activism, I think is, is challenging. So, I think that there are materials that are, they shouldn't be banned in our nation necessarily, so when we talk about banning, I think banning is, is the wrong terminology. I think there are materials that are beneath the dignity of the students in Natrona County School District. They're beneath the dignity of this school district. And so I hope that, that you all, in your wisdom, and this is a judgment call you all need to make, can draw the line as to what, we have the resources, when we begin an issue with a student, do we have the resources to really take that through or not? And I would suggest dealing with gender dysphoria. We just don't have that. I think we should remain silent on that, and that should be handled in other venues of our society. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. True.
Hello, my name is Zoe Von Gunten. I am a 12th grade student at Kelly Walsh High School, and I would like to take this opportunity to talk to you about the banning of books in our schools and libraries. I am a lover of books, literature, and English, and I can plan to pursue this in the future. And seeing books being banned in my libraries and in our schools feels very unacceptable and seemingly just an overt abuse of power. For me, banning of books tells me that we are limiting access to students' knowledge, which is truly inappropriate in a republic that values the right of every citizen to have information. Books have always been the way for students to find information, learn, and grow as people. Education is built upon the collective memory. And books are written out pieces of knowledge, our records to the past, present, and possible futures. Banning of books damages a core belief in education, which is to teach students to think for themselves, to make decisions on their own, and to think critically. Books that are being banned, such as The Hate U Give by Anjik Thomas and The Kite Runner by Khalid Hosni, are stories that we can connect to as readers, getting to experience the world around us through the eyes of those characters. This knowledge is so important for us because we can start to understand the struggles that people go through every single day, or even things that have happened in the past. By doing this, we are essentially banning the knowledge of the world to students. And on top of this, how many people who are trying to ban these books have actually read the material that they are against? The perspectives in history and the knowledge of these books serve are incredibly important. The age-old adage, "Those who ignore history are doomed to repeat it," is the same of books. I'm aware of the fear that many parties hold of students being exposed to certain ideas such as sexuality, sexual situations, and offensive content. The world is a very dangerous and difficult place for us to live in, but if our concern is for teenagers finding explicit content, then why are books being banned when the sad truth is that we can find so many inappropriate content and it's so easily accessible on the internet? This is an era of information, and if a certain person wants to know something, they'll have the internet at their fingertips. Students clearly have access to explicit content and can easily find it. However, in the classroom, educators are able to guide and help students interpret texts, and moreover, the library system filters the content to assure the accuracy and the merit of the content being opposed to the unrestricted nature of the internet. So many books have powerful stories about bravery and strength and pain and suffering in real-world situations. If we ban these, we are getting rid of the representation that so many students who need these representation to see themselves as the main characters of these stories because they don't get to see themselves as beautiful people or as main characters in their own lives. And so I think we need to make sure that we can continue to read the books in our libraries and continue to protect them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chairman Catalier, Superintendent Jennings, and trustees. I'm Jennifer Zerba. I live in Casper, and I am a mom for literacy. I'm completely in favor of everything that you have been doing with your review with the books that were wanting to be banned. I would, I'm going to take this opportunity to read you our Wyoming Constitution and what is guaranteed to every single one of our students. Article one, section three, equal political rights. Since equality in the enjoyment of natural and civil rights is only made sure through political equality, the laws of this state affecting the political rights and privileges of its citizens shall be without distinction of race, color, sex, or any circumstance or condition whatsoever other than individual incompetency or unworthiness duly ascertained by a court of competent jurisdiction. Article, article seven, section twelve, Secretarianism prohibited. No secretarian instruction, qualification, or test shall be imparted, exacted, applied, or in any manner tolerated in the schools of any grade or character controlled by the state, nor shall any attendance be required at any religious service therein, nor shall any secretarian tenants or doctrines be taught or favored in any public school or institution that may be established under this constitution. Trustees, you have been given public funds. Public funds means that you are to spend them with regard to all of us, all of our students, regardless of their sex, color, race, and distinction thereof. And I am so very grateful for every single one of you, for your service to our community, to our service to our students, to make sure that those public funds are being spent responsibly. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Zerba. You're good to go.
Alright, thank you so much for having public comment on this. My name is Tanis Levercheck Saunders. I am the main history teacher at Casper College and also the parent of a member of the LGBTQ community. There are three things interrelated that I wanted to address about this issue. Someone earlier mentioned humanity and human dignity, implying that these books would challenge that. I would say exactly the opposite. Acknowledging the humanity of LGBTQ students by having them represented in libraries affirms their dignity as human beings, because representation matters. When they see themselves represented in a book, it improves their sense of self-worth. When those who aren't part of the community see LGBTQ people in books, they realize that their peers are equal.
they realize that their peers are equals, not inferior. When you take these books out of a library, it is suggesting to the community, and I can assure you, this is how the kids take it, that because it's LGBTQ, it's controversial, it indicates that they are the problem. And that serves to to threaten their sense of well-being. It also sends a message to the peers that there's something wrong with them, that they are different, they are the problem. And it's no wonder that um nine out of 10 LGBTQ students report having been harassed or bullied at school. Something that was mentioned at the beginning of this session, uh, according to the Pew Research Council, LGBTQ are 140 times more likely to miss school out of fear that they are gonna be bullied. And one way to address this is by having them represented. I agree with parents having a right to have a say in their child's education. I want to say in my child's education. But my say ends where someone else's child begins. And their say over their child's education ends where my child begins. I am responsible for parenting my child. I can't ask the board to be responsible for that. I can't ask the librarians to be responsible for that. But what I can ask is that, as according to the the mission statement for the Natrona County School Board, it says, and now I need to refine my quote. Oh, my time is ending. Um, yeah. That it is the duty to empower every learner to grow, excel, and be a successful contributor to the global and local community. LGBTQ people are part of that community. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Lovercheck Saunders.
Hello, my name is Lisa Scroggins. I'm the mother of a junior who's a student at K-Dub, and I am a professional librarian. This topic is really not about personal beliefs. It's not about the LGBTQ community, although they do have a right to be heard and to be seen and reflected in their materials they access. It's not about persons of color. It's not about ethnicity. It's about the First Amendment rights of our children, of my child, that she be able to access materials that she finds to have value or to be important. We already know that school library staff members follow well-established procedures when making purchases for their collections. It is incredibly important that library collections provide access to relevant, reliable information for people from all walks of life, from all orientations, from all ethnicities. Allowing any one group to limit what is available to another group sets a dangerous precedent. Providing access to materials addressing diverse views should not be confused with social activism. Instead, it is acknowledging the value of allowing a diverse set of students to access those materials relevant to them. It is my understanding that this board followed its policies and assembled a committee that then reviewed the two items that were formally challenged and came to a decision to retain those items in the respective collections. I am here to tell you, I applaud you as a board for having and then following your procedures. And I encourage you to stand behind the decision of the committee that you convened. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Scroggins.
Hello, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Michelle Sabroski, St. Louis. I live at 3650 Harvey Place. I just want to express my condolences to the Diaz family and to the students that are hurting today in our community. As you know, you guys know me, most of you, I am a homeschool mom, so I really don't have a dog in this fight as uh as far as children in the district go. However, I am a taxpayer and you guys do take my money. And I do want to have a say in how that money is spent. And I do not want my money spent on pornography. And um, I will just, before I proceed, I just want to back up just a slight bit. I have my own home library because I do pay for my children's education out of my own pocket directly. And I have my own library. And I actually have content in my own library that I have purchased myself that goes against our core beliefs and our core values. Because I want my children to have access to those things so they can see the things that you, because you have to know what you don't believe as much as what you do believe in, right? I want my kids to see the full picture. I have the Communist Manifesto. I have books by John Dewey, and I have The Origin of Species, and I'm a creationist. My children have access to different beliefs so they can formulate their own opinions and they can make an informed decision on their own. What my children do not have access to in my library in my home is pornography. And when they turn 18, if they want to, they can take their own little debit card and they can go to an amazing place called amazon.com where you can get just about anything. And I would venture to say, if parents really, really, truly want their children to have access to these books, these books aren't banned anywhere in the country. You can buy them. Why do I have to buy something that I don't believe in? Why am I forced to buy something that goes against my core set of beliefs, my core set of values, something that I find is damaging to children? That it's it's damaging, and nobody knows the actual consequences of that. Nobody's ever done the research to figure out what the what the end result's gonna be years and years from now. Why do I have to pay for that? Why am I being forced to pay for something like that? The taxpayers aren't getting a choice here, but mom and dad, they have a choice. They should be able to buy the books that they want their kids to have access to. And if they really truly stand by it, these parents that have spoken today, they all have the choice to go buy those books for their children. Why do the taxpayers have to do it? And why do they have to be accessible to other children who might be struggling with things that probably shouldn't have access to those books because it might feed other thoughts? I mean, you don't know what's in those books. Are we raising child, future predators? We don't know. We don't know the consequences of books like that. But I'll leave with just one thought as you guys are all pondering all of this for everybody in this room. I'm just gonna quote R.C. Sproul, "What's wrong with you people?"
Thank you, Ms. St. Louis.
Hi, uh, my name is Jaden Wright, and I would like to say thank you for allowing public conversation tonight. I did not plan to talk, but seeing people disagree with representing my existence sparked a feeling that I feel I should share with you guys. I have recently been given the opportunity to transition, and this has sparked a great joy within me. Um, in the 18 years that it's taken to get this privilege, a lack of book discussing my transgender identity did not erase my personal identity. I grew up with a very unsupportive external situation outside of school. Um, and once I was able to move into high school and find an environment that did support me in a school environment, I felt that that was the place that I thrived the most. And in those four years, I was given the opportunity to become the person that I am today. Without that support, I would not be a great person. Transgender people have always existed in in history. Historians have found male bodies that have been buried in female ways, representing a possibility of transgender people. Transgender people are nothing new. They are just something that are being more widely accepted. Schools are a place of learning, and in learning about identity is crucial in education. Identity gives people a place and a meaning. And no identity is harmful to people's existence. I am a firm believer that access is important, especially in identity, and I hope that you guys continue to allow transgender people to exist in school. Thank you.
Thank you, Jaden.
Okay, my name is Vincent O'Connell. Um, I'm here today honestly disgusted and appalled. The reason for it is we've made this political, and it disgusts me. This has nothing to do with the LGBTQ community at all. It has nothing to do with the book and the writings in the book. What it has to do with is the pictures and the photographs in the book. We're literally showing our kids sexual content and allowing it. So are we gonna allow Hustler in the schools and Playboy in the schools? Those magazines, I don't know if you've ever read them. Sometimes they tell about the women's how how they came into success and how they came into modeling. Those are success stories, right? I still don't support that. Why are we allowing this kind of material in the school? Why is this even a conversation for you guys? It's common sense. Am I trying to silence anyone or um censor anyone? I was, I was in the military. I served for four years. I believe in our constitutional rights. I don't want to censor anyone. But these children should not be allowed access to pornographic materials in a public setting. That's all I needed.
Thank you, Mr. O'Connell.
My name is Lisa Gray. I'm a retired NCH English teacher, and I live in Sheridan. When we start to ban books, we lose our freedom to learn from history, to learn other struggles that are similar to our own, and to learn courage, honesty, and freedom of expression. After listening to the archived meetings, I think the critical piece that is missing is the fact that the two books in question are not taught in the classroom. They are on a shelf in the library where where kids who may be interested in the topic will pick it up, others won't. Except now maybe because it's been a topic of discussion. It is true that art and storytelling are the two most powerful things humanity has ever created. Yet they are the most attacked for their ideas, experiences, and historical importance. Thankfully, banning these things never stops the creative process of those who have a message. It's absurd to think that if we ban books from one forum, it doesn't eliminate the ability to access the content. If they can find it on the shelf, they can find it on their devices. The world is changing at a rapid pace, and what was hidden 60 years ago has finally emerged into the light. LGBTQ people have existed since time began. They just didn't know how to fit in. Books that challenge our beliefs, make us uncomfortable, or question humanity are the books that change lives. The world is different, and thanks to books like Gender Queer and Trans Bodies, Trans Selves, young adults are finding solace in knowing they have the same thoughts, questions, and feelings of loneliness and despair. They are no longer alone. Just because gender queer is in a graphic novel format does not mean it is pornography. It's for those that are smacked in the face with puberty and don't know how to deal with it or ask questions about it. If they find solace in the experience of another, it makes it easy to cope with the differences they feel. We all know kids are bullied for being weird, but weird by whose standards? If students are allowed by their own choice to read books to understand culture, diversity, sexuality, relationships, et cetera, they at least become well-informed. They also develop empathy for others. Michelangelo's David was where I saw my first male nude in the Encyclopedia Britannica, and I knew that page number for a long time. People consider that pornography. Just because a book is on a shelf doesn't mean it's gonna be taught in the classroom. Let's be honest, if it's not in a student, student's interest, they will not pick it up. Trans Bodies, Trans Selves is a positive, positive resource for transgender and gender-questioning people. It provides authoritative information in an inclusive and respectful way. If a student is interested in the book, why not allow them to at least get accurate information rather than being misinformed? Books are there to share experiences, especially the difficult ones, in hopes of making it easier for someone else. It's so easy to be afraid of things you don't understand, and reading a book about transgender life isn't going to make you transgender. Instead, take the opportunity to discuss the challenging topics with your children. Parents have that control. You guys know your policies. You've done your due diligence. The, the review committee, uh, the um outcome needs to be respected. And if they, if it isn't, they can continue to homeschool their own children. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gray.
Pat Sweeney, 951 North Kimball. So totally respect the conversation and differing views and really respect on our school boards following your process and following through. And I'd urge you to accept the recommendation of the the committee. Do not accept the appeal and move forward. And I'm sure they'll continue with their appeals. Um, and and that's fine. That's their rights. But as we're seeing across the country, this isn't going to end. Um, it's going to be additional rhetoric. Uh, and we're just going to have to deal with it, I guess. Um, until uh, the country decides what it's going to do and not do. But so I encourage you to stand strong to to your process. Um, I found out with, within the legislature, trying to deal with bias-motivated crimes will be probably the last state uh, to do anything that the Department of Justice has suggested that we're out of compliance with. And that's unfortunate. When in national laws and national standards now Matthew Shepard is named. Um, and I think it's shameful. And uh, you can have your own beliefs, but can't we just come to a point where we can get along and see differing views for what they are and live together in a peaceful, civil way? Again, stay strong. I appreciate all of your good work and totally appreciate the situation you're in. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Sweeney. Always nice to see you and hope to see you and some of your other colleagues a little more often.
Hello, my, oh, hang on, let me pull up my notes. My name is Sammy Saunders. I am a junior at Kelly Walsh High School. My mom spoke here a bit ago. Her name is Tanis Lovercheck Saunders, and I have come to add on. So I believe that education is extremely important in creating a safe environment for us LGBTQ plus students. The more educated people are, they less, the more they understand us, the more accepting they are of us. And that creates a much better environment to be safe and learn safely. And I believe something that encourages that education is having the LGBTQ plus books in our school libraries. Because having it in the school library specifically says the school's education recognize us. And it might encourage students to learn more, to educate themselves more about us so that they can learn. Maybe it'll lead a student to figuring out their identity. Maybe it'll lead a student to to become an ally and help create a more accepting environment. But what we need really is an accepting environment, and the education is one of the best ways to go about it. And as I already said before, having the books there in the school, it's like anyone could go and read them, and they could suddenly learn something new. And it encourages education. That's really all I have to say. Uh, thank you.
Thank you, Sammy.
Hello, my name is Christian Colter. I am a Casper resident. I earned a history degree at the University of Wyoming, and I'm currently studying at the University of Wyoming Master's Program for Counseling. I think in regards to this issue, there's a couple of historical examples that we can take a look at for some guidance. When the Nazi Party first instituted their book bannings and their book burnings, the first books they went after were books located at the Institute of Sex Research. It was a library of around 20,000 books and journals, which were publicly hauled out and burned in the street. The collection included unique works on intersexuality, homosexuality, and transgender topics. Dora Richter, the first transgender woman known to have undergone sex reassignment surgery, was killed in the attack. I think that as a nation, we have always prided ourselves on freedom of speech and freedom of expression. Freedom of speech does not exist when we ban things that are Freedom of speech does not exist when we ban things that are not convenient to us. And I think we owe it to future generations to give them the full benefits of this freedom. Another example is during the civil rights era of the 1960s. In segregationist states, it was considered political to be against segregation and to be pro interracial marriages and interracial partnerships of any kind. Back then, this issue was deemed a political issue. And if you were against institutional racism, it was considered to be a political act. So we need to ask ourselves what we are doing when we label the, like, supporting LGBTQ rights as a political act? And how our descendants will judge us for this? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coulter.
Archie Petrie, I'm a counselor here in Wyoming, specifically Casper. Graduated in Natchon County in 98. I can 100% say that I doubt this book would be the first or only pornographic material that any child at Natchon County High School would have access to went to the library. Art books are amazing for that reason, if nothing else. Now, as to the other topics at hand, I've worked extensively over the last 10 years with teens that have dealt with a variety of mental health issues through private practice, the school district, and Wyoming Behavioral Institute. I can honestly tell you that I've lost count in the number of children who felt ostracized, victimized, and negated because they didn't know about what it was to be trans or any of these questions. And the answer they got was, "Well, no, don't even think about it." The book gives them at least a starting point to understand. The second part is, in all that time, I've never once dealt with a kid who came into my office, who was really troubled because they were reading through the library and suddenly thought, "Hey, maybe I'm trans because I read this book." And then struggled with that deep, deep, nonexistent issue. I have yet to work with a single person who honestly came to my office asking for hormone therapy, or asking for transition help, or coming out in any of that way, that there wasn't a lot of that that was applicable. But I have had lots of kids who've come to my office that struggled with this through high school, that came to me as an adult after multiple suicide attempts and said, "Hey, you know what? I think this is something I'm actually really struggling with and need to be aware of, and I really wish I had known it was something to even look at when I was younger." So, yeah, I just, as a member of the community who's had two children go through the school district, I really doubt that either of these books are going to negatively harm any children, but they could positively help hundreds. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Petrie. Nice to see you. Hit it till it turns green. Just tap it. There you go.
Oh, there we are. My name is Dan Ray. I'm a resident here in Casper, Natchon County. I went to school from the first grade through the 12th grade, Garfield, Dean Morgan, and NC. But that was a while ago. But I am, you know, I'm still alive and all that kind of stuff. I'm an old guy, but I think my opinions are still valid. So thank you, school board, for, you know, taking this stuff on. I know that's your job, but thank you anyway. I've been thinking about all of this stuff for a number of days, and I finally decided I'll just bring out two facts that I, a couple of people have referred to. Go to the internet to find out anything you want to know. So I did a little research on the numbers of what you might call LGBT. How big is that community? How big is the trans community in the United States? And here's what I found out. I did a little math here and there. It looks to me like what I heard, or what I read, there was a 2022 Gallup poll that said there are 23.5 million adults in the United States who identify as LGB or T or Q. That's 7.1% of the adult population. There was a National Institutes of Health study that came out in 2016 that said, for in terms of just the transgender community, it, I think it was 390 per 100,000. I did a little math on that. Turns out that 0.039% of the population for a total of 256,000 individuals. So those are both significant numbers of people. I don't think it does any good to ignore them. And then just one opinion, I did read Gender Queer. I actually found it on the internet, and there was one image on one page that I was pretty disturbed by. But other than that, you know, if I was gonna give it to a kid, I don't know what I would do with that one page. Maybe I'd cover it up with a, glue a piece of paper over it or something. I don't know. But the book, I thought, was great. Like a lot of people have said, I think if somebody's confused as to what they are, who they are, what they're going through, really nice to have another resource like that. When I was in the sixth grade, and I won't tell you how many decades ago that was, we had a guy come in and talk to us. It was our birds and bees for sixth-grade boys talk. And all I'd learned about anything that was outside of the standard, standard, you know, white Anglo-Saxon Protestant heterosexual world, was that if you hang around public bathrooms in city parks, there will be guys called homosexuals who will come and kidnap you. So I've learned some since then. It turns out that's really not really true very much. Maybe it happens. It hasn't ever happened to me. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Ray.
Is this on? Okay, it's already on. Okay, Renee Redding, Casper. So the previous gentleman said there was one page. Let me read you, well, there's actually a couple, and I'm probably gonna shock some people here. Page 166. "We made out. We had sex. We've moved into sexting at work. I got a new strap-on harness today. I can't wait to put it in you. It will fit my favorite dildo perfectly. Are you going to look so hot? I can't wait to have your cock in my mouth. I'm going to give you a blowjob." I'm appalled. One page, he said, no. I ask you all to get that book and read it. One, we're not asking for you guys to ban books. We're not asking you to ban LGBTQ books. We're asking for books that don't have this kind of stuff in it. Since when is it okay to have? Because let me tell you, transgender, trans self, right, is graded for K through 12. Do you, I don't think that's okay. I don't think this stuff was okay. But again, every parent has their choice. I'm not asking, and neither are the other two, the other people that are looking at these books, for you guys to ban books. We're asking for books that don't have what is called erotica in it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Redding. One time. There you go.
Hello. My name is Kristi Gendrickt-Toll, and I am a licensed professional counselor here in Casper in private practice. I wanted to start out by saying, well, and just so that you know too, I am also certified in EMDR. I'm a certified trauma therapist. I've worked with, how I got adolescence to be kind of my specialty, I have no idea. You could have asked me 20 years ago, and I would have no idea how that would happen. But they are. I come to kind of talk about really quickly, I often get accused in private practice of magic. Like, I'm doing magic. You have something magical here. And it takes a lot of courage to come to therapy. And so I see these people, and they come in, and this magic happens. Well, I'm gonna let you in on a little secret. It's not magic. There's two things that happen. The first one is, imagine last time that you guys were in crisis, or stressed out, or something was happening in your life. I want you to think about all of the people that supported you and what their responses were. The two most powerful words in the dictionary is "me too." Me too. So that is one of my secrets of the magic that happens in therapy, is just saying, "Wow." I'm gonna crawl down in this hole with you and look around and go, "Wow. How do you do this? What do you need? How do we help you?" The second one is, is, this is an old, old addiction treatment, is a saying that says you are only as sick as your secrets. And so people come in with lots of secrets. And guess what happens in the magic that I do in therapy? It's not really magic. It's just saying, "Let's talk about it. Let's have these discussions. Let's open this up. These are not secrets, right? These are things that we can talk about." And so I just think we need a little bit more magic, magic in this world right now. I think we need magic in the city, magic in the schools, and some of that magic in libraries. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gendrickt-Toll. Close?
Hello. My name is Clint Saunders. I'm a college teacher and business owner, a resident of Casper. My wife spoke earlier, Tanis, and my daughter spoke earlier as well. There's been some just amazing points that have run up over and over that I would love to just reiterate that they were fantastic. One obvious thing that I think about whenever this subject comes up is the people that are afraid of these books. I get it, but I'd like to tell you that there's millions of books that my daughter has read in the library that didn't turn her straight. Not one of them. My daughter is an avid reader. She reads, oh my gosh, this kid reads books. She's read hundreds of books, and not one of them has made her straight, despite the fact that I don't think one of them has been an LGBTQ plus book. She loves fantasy genres. She's a huge Harry Potter fan. She's read those books 10 times. She doesn't think she's a witch. These books, reading these books gives you knowledge and compassion and empathy. It doesn't turn you into what's in the book. And so we need to let go of that fear that if my kid reads this book about LGBTQ plus community, that they're suddenly gonna become part of that community. And even if you are afraid of that, you need to let go of that fear too, because my daughter's in that community, and she's a beautiful human. And I'm glad she's in that community, and we have a lot of good friends in that community as well. And I, it's beautiful. So we need to let go of that fear that books are going to turn you into what the book is. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Saunders.
Hello. I'm Zach Schneider, and while I am the theater teacher at Natchon County High School, I don't speak to you in that position tonight. I'm coming to you as a former student of NCHS and one who grew up with Matthew Shepard from first grade all the way through college. Next week is 24 years since my friend was pulled out of a bar in Laramie, Wyoming, tied to a fence, and beaten with the barrel of a .45 revolver. And while there is arguments about why it was done, his murderers felt that by using language and his sexuality against him, they could convince a jury of 12 Wyomingites to let them go free. Tonight, you have heard some language that has power. You've heard the word pornography, and you've heard a small quote from Gender Queer. And that language is meant to do something emotionally to you, to have an emotional reaction, to make you feel icky about what those people do. That language has power. And if we allow that language, which is mischaracterizing the two books in question, if we allow that to convince you nine Wyomingites that these books should be taken out, we're proving the murderers of Matt Shepard correct. I knew Matt from the time we were six years old, and the first time I found out he was gay was when I read about it in the Branding Iron 24 years ago, the student newspaper at UW that said, "Gay University of Wyoming student is fighting for his life." I was in theater with this kid. And if you know anything about theater, this is where misfits come, to have a home. And this kid that I knew for my entire life didn't feel comfortable enough to let me know who he was. And so many other of my brothers and sisters that I graduated with did not come out until after high school. Our kids today are all right. They're allowed to be who they are, and they have adults who support them. And as long as I draw breath, I will support any student, no matter how they identify themselves. And I hope that you would too. This is important, and we can't let this language cloud the issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schneider.
Hello. My name is Tiana Saunders. You've just heard my entire family speak this evening, but I wanted to add my own thing. So I have lived in Casper since I was 12 years old, and I've done theater my entire life. And seeing my gay friends struggle in high school because they didn't have resources that they needed was really life-changing for me. There have been a lot of words said tonight that I have a lot of things I could say, but there's a couple of things that I just wrote down. If we're going to ban these books because of some of the explicit language in them, then we might as well ban every single young adult book that talks about sexuality in any way, shape, or form. Teens are developing, they're discovering their sexuality, and that's not gonna change by banning these books. All you're teaching these children by banning these books is that their sexuality doesn't matter, that they are wrong and somehow incorrect in the world. I think one of my main points that I wanna say is, what is so wrong about being in the gay community? What is so wrong about it? And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Saunders. You're on. Now you're off. Push it one more time. There you go.
Got it? Okay, Chairman. Mr. Jennings, Mr. Silva, members of the board. As someone who's been on the other side of the podium, I appreciate what all of you are doing, but are at the other side of the dais. Charlie Powell, I'm a psychologist in the community. And I'd like to share with you some of my experiences treating transgendered adults. I had the privilege of getting to know about their struggles, their histories, and some of the things that they went through. They weren't political activists. They weren't trying to do anything but deal with a very difficult problem. And they believed to their very core that they were simply born into the wrong body, as difficult as it is for us to imagine that. And every moment of every day, they felt that they were in the wrong body. It's a very hard life. It's not a life anyone would choose. And they struggled with employment, rejection from family, and an intense isolation and discouragement. Several were pursuing surgery, which is also a very arduous process. I lost one to suicide. It's just very, very difficult, and the support is so limited. But of course, your decision isn't about them, it's about the kids in our school district and what they should have access to. But I do think transgendered adults can be instructive, because I learned about their histories, and here's some of the things they told me. They told me they didn't have a name for it. Hopefully, that has changed in recent years. They told me that every single one of them told me they thought they were the only one. And they had a profound sense of discouragement and disillusionment about their futures. Thoughts of self-harm were very common, and I did lose one. And they just said that I wish someone could have told me that I wasn't the only one, and that there was some hope for me. And the issue of suicide is... And the issue of suicide is very relevant here, because as we all know, suicide is much more common for the LGBTQ youth population than for the general adolescent population, which is already unacceptably high. And it's about that sense of isolation and discouragement and sometimes ridicule that they deal with. And again, hopefully we're getting better in those areas. But I just want to encourage you to leave these books in so that people, so these young people can get that sense that they have been represented and cared enough by the authority figures in their lives to make these materials available. Trust your professionals. They do the reviews. They've read the books. They know what the kids can handle and what they can't. And let them do their work. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Powell.
Hi there. My name is Caroline Kirsch. I'm a family medicine physician here in Casper. And I come to talk to you about the transgender and gender diverse community and suicide. As we know, September is Suicide Prevention Month. And we also all know, I think, that Wyoming has the highest suicide rate in the entire country. There have been some comments tonight that seem to indicate that suicidality is intrinsic to gender diversity. And this is not the case. Suicidality linked with gender diversity is a response to minority stress based on society's response to the gender diverse population. And the reason that I think this is important for me to come up here and talk to you about is that there's also data that shows that for each social situation, a transgender adolescent is affirmed, that that suicide risk goes down significantly. And if that one situation is the school having two books on its shelf that affirms them and lets them know that there's one space that even by having books on their shelves affirms them and decreases that risk for suicide, that is significant. And I just ask that the, that the board keep this in mind as you think about what we can do for our students, because I know that you are all here because you have children's best interest at heart. And I think that keeping them alive needs to be our top priority. Thank you all.
Thank you, Dr. Kirsch.
Good evening and thank everybody for coming. And no way, I'm Bernie Studer. I live in Casper. There's no way I'm an expert on this subject. But I do applaud the love of the parents on both sides and their concern for their students and the teachers that do the same. I just want to say that I'm not afraid of the books, but I do think the younger the child, they need more guidance as they question themselves. That is very important for parents to do that. And I'm afraid this, this subject has become a diversion in the name of diversity. I just ask that everybody respect each other, respect each other's opinions. And to, I want to, and I want to give some advice. I've been thinking about this for a while to the, to the student or the kids that are, that want to transition. I suggest that you wait till 21, because right now, one thing that this has caused is us not, we're doing this. What are we not doing? We're not helping students set their career path, get their, get their studies done and focus with discipline on that. And the reason I say 21 on a transition is you'll, once you get out of high school especially, you'll have three years to live a little bit of life on your own. I just heard a story last week about a 16-year-old girl in California. I don't know where she lived. She decided she was a boy. So she had a double mastectomy and I don't know what the timeframe of this was. But after she, I think she was 18 or something like that, she decided she made a mistake. And I, I can't remember what the details were, but she ended up committing suicide. And that's one reason why I say wait till 21. I personally would respect your decision more. You know, that you have a little more input into your life. I don't want to see anybody go. My brother was a suicide. It's not fun. But if you are contemplating suicide, what's the number? Excellent. Ask somebody for help. Ask somebody that you trust. Schools, protection of all students. And I'm sorry, I do not know what happened at NC or Park this morning, but any tragedy at any school is devastating. And I've been around a lot of kids out here. I, they're great. And I don't know where they got it from, their parents, their teachers, or whatever. But the kids I run into and that, that could be into the thousands, they're great. Keep it up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Studer. One more time. There you go.
Okay, technology. My name is Gina Lamb-Pickett and I am a very proud mother of two graduates from the Natrona County School District, 1/2020 and 1/2022. My children, my daughters attended Park Elementary, Dean Morgan, and NC. I think that we've had a lot of good comments tonight, but I think we're forgetting about what we're here about, and that's banning books. And I think that banning books is a very slippery slope. And what one minority group might consider pornography, someone else might not. And when is the book gonna come out? The one of us that might offend one of us or it could just go down and get to the point that everyone's offended about everything? So I think it's important. I do want to thank the committee that took the time to review this and bring their findings forward. I thank all of you for serving on the school board. It's not an easy job anymore nowadays. But please respect the committee and those people who took time to review the book. Please respect your staff and your librarians. At all those schools that I mentioned, I was at book fairs and volunteered at the library. And I must say, we had excellent librarians and I think it would be wise to trust them. I trust them that they would not put anything in their library that they thought was inappropriate. So please, consider those when you're making your decision. And hopefully, we won't be here in the future looking at other books that could be banned, because I do think it's a slippery slope. And I would hope that we trust the professionals. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lamb-Pickett.
Hello.
You're good.
My name is Bodhi Pate. I live at 340 West 12. I am a NC grad. I am a current Casper College student. I also worked at WBI for a time. So I've worked with people in crisis, most particularly young, young people in crisis. A lot of them came from backgrounds like myself, where it was a very hard time trying to come to terms with their identities. I can speak from my experience as an NC grad and as someone who is still in the school system here in Casper, that it is oftentimes way too incredibly difficult to find support, to find the resources we need. It is very alienating to sometimes be in an environment with people who do not think well of queer students, think we're predators, think we're monsters. I speak to you as a human being, flesh and blood. I grew up in libraries. I found myself lost in stories. I want to thank an NNC English teacher, Mrs. McGurran, for continuing to inspire that love of books and literature in my later years. So I just hope that this board considers keeping these books. They're incredibly important, not just for students, but for the community as a whole to grow, because these kids will stay here in Casper for years to come and they will inform the next generation of people who live here. So I hope that the board makes the right decision and keeps these books and inspires all the kids here to keep learning. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bodhi. Anyone else that would like to address the board? Please come forward and state your name and address and limit your comments to three minutes or less. And since we've got a couple of satellite rooms right now, we'll give them a minute or two until I get an all-clear and we can just look at each other. All right, I'm getting thumbs up. So at this time, we will move into, it can, oh, excuse me. We will move into the approval of the general session minutes of September 12th, 2022. So without objection, the minutes of the general session of September 12th, 2022 will be approved. Seeing no objection, seeing no objection, the minutes are approved. And without objection, the minutes of the executive session of September 12th, 2022 will be approved. Seeing no objection, those minutes are approved. Superintendent Jennings, you have the consent agenda.
Chair Catalier, trustees, there are three items on your consent agenda this evening for your consideration. Certified and classified personnel report, district bills dated September 9th, 2022, and September 16th, 2022, and three donations.
Thank you, Superintendent Jennings. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda items? Moved by Mr. Miler and seconded by Mr. Applegate. Any further discussion? Yes, Ms. McCullar.
I need to abstain from check number 224195.
Thank you, Ms. McCullar. I would just like to thank the 1966 Mustangs for their donation to support homeless students and to the Dollar General Literacy Foundation for their award of a $2,000 grant to the Crest Hill Elementary School Library. And of course, then to Mr. Kutcher? No. Dutcher. Mr. Dutcher for his donation of the cornerstone back to Natrona County High School. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify with a show of hands. Any opposed, same sign. The motion is approved. Into trustee reports. So looks like we have a BOSI's report. Trustee Howie.
That would be me tonight. We had our BOSI's meeting last Monday. It was relatively short. We, one of the main things that we did was, as we always do, is we go over the budget. But we also went over the policy that we have on the large grants that we award and to make sure that the forms were okay and that everything was, that was, everything was there that was needed. We've decided this year we'll have about $250,000 to do grants with, both. We call them long and short. Short grants are anything under $10,000. Long grants are more than that. Then there were some affiliate reports. Week five, computer science. Let's see, for K6, there are a lot of people, there are 15 staff members taking computer science classes. And they're looking at like a second level that has more to do with software for teachers that teach K6, rather than writing, you know, code as you would teach in the, in the secondary levels. Then we had a report with, from UW-Casper. We have 50 articulated classes, which means they are getting credit for both Casper College and NCSD. And since Casper College started before we did, there's a little bit of a delayed start for the, the records and stuff for the kids at the, at the high school level. But we'll get it all caught up. That's just about it. And our next meeting for BOSI's is October 17th.
Thank you, Trustee Howie. Any questions for BOSI's or on BOSI's? All right. Thank you. Now, at this time, we will move into other business and we'll start with trustee comments. I think I'll start with trustee Jensen tonight.
So that was an informative evening from the public. We appreciate your comments. I, I've had an education tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Jensen. Trustee Miler.
Wish Jackson would have stuck around a little bit longer. I'm also an Eagle Scout and did my project in Martin's Cove. Made benches. It was fun. So I'm really excited for him to have this opportunity to earn his Eagle Scout rank and obviously to add some more history to Natrona County High School. And once again, to reiterate trustee Jensen's comments about it was very informative. I could tell you that each one of us trustees is taking this matter seriously, making sure to educate ourselves on this matter and doing our best. We want our kids to succeed. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Miler. Trustee Smith.
I also wanted to recognize Jackson Dutcher. I think that that's super cool what he's doing. He's adding a little piece of NC history and that's amazing. So kudos to him. And again, just to reiterate, thank you all for coming out. We really do appreciate hearing comments from the public. It's really good to hear both sides of the issue. It helps us to make decisions in the future and just kind of gives us a better idea of what people are thinking. And I mean, you're all our constituents, so it's important that we hear from you. So thank you, guys.
Thank you, trustee Smith. Trustee Howie.
I just want to reiterate the same. I can't tell you how much we appreciate all of you coming tonight and daring to voice your opinions, which is sometimes not easy, but we appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Howie. Trustee McCullar.
So I will also add my thank you to everyone for being here. And congratulations to Mr. Dutcher on his project, because being an Eagle Scout, I know nothing about, but I know it's a big deal, because the people that have attained that honor go places.
Thank you, trustee McCullar. Trustee Applegate.
Yeah, I don't have much to add tonight. Again, thanks, everyone, for coming. We had 29 folks speak. It's a passionate issue. Teachers, parents, students, librarians, medical professionals. It was, it was really, I think, insightful and really appreciated. I, I think we always make better decisions when the public's engaged. And we've had a pretty engaged public in the last couple of years. So thank you for coming. I was gonna talk, I have a limited number of meetings left on the board. And I have a few things I haven't gotten done and I want to advocate for. And I was gonna talk about the Wyoming Stewartship Project tonight, but I don't think I will. I think I'll just let that pass. With the deaths of some of our family in the district, that's just tragic. And, and obviously, this issue is very serious too. So I'll save that for next meeting. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you, trustee Applegate. Trustee Walsh.
And I really have nothing new to add but to add my thanks to everyone and for all of you coming and sharing with us tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Walsh. And I have nothing else to add either, other than thanks to everyone who came out and spoke in front of us tonight. We do appreciate each and every one of you. Superintendent Jennings.
I'd like to echo some comments made by trustee Catalier and other trustees about our deepest sympathies and condolences. Go out to the Diaz family tonight. You are in our thoughts and prayers. I speak for the entire district when I say how saddened we are about the tragic events that took place over this weekend. Our hearts are with the family, friends, classmates, teachers, and coworkers. We will continue to support our students, our staff, and the families through this very difficult time. So just extend our condolences as a district to the family. And trustees, thank you for all of your work and absolutely public comment. It's really important that we hear multiple sides of a variety of topics when, when looking at, at impacts. So your next meeting is on Monday, October 10th, 2022, 7:00 PM in this facility.
Thank you, superintendent Jennings.